Take care of the health and safety violations. So I'm sure, um, Arwell is probably cussing a blue streak.
No.
Knowing that I want to do this, because I know what, I know what that's going to do to you guys. That's going to be massive.
If that's what happens, then ultimately we'll ask the city, we'll push the city to give more support too.
That's what's going to come out soon. Because I know that Lancher Lodge has, I think, one or two Des- Des Moines officers specifically just for that.
They do, they do, they have. You're right, that's exactly right, they do. And we have to, we have to avoid that misstep by closing the doors. We don't want to do that, but we also have some very important people. Do you know who Carlin Hart is? She, she, oh, she's Diana. Uh, she has a lot of backing, she has a lot of experience. There's a Safari mobile home park?
Yes, 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 yes.
Definitely a leader there. Definitely a leader. So that's one of the things we're looking forward to, is to get that. Christie has some experience with joint cars agreements, so she might be the one that might craft it. But, you know, Chad May, he was receptive to it. I met with him privately, he knew what the question was before I asked it, but he had to have me ask it in the public forum, so, so we did, but there's. That might be coming out.
Well, you know, this last year, like I said, it's been a huge learning experience for me. I've been a law officer for 21 years, but I had no idea with study code compliance, what it entailed, what it involved in our city, our community, the demands. And every, you know, especially too, with working in DPS, every neighborhood has their, I guess, what makes it, yeah, exactly. Um, so, I wish it would be better, I mean, I've seen some mobile home parks and they're, they're bad, they're, they're. Um, and, and like I said, I don't, I don't know, you know, but obviously those are the decisions and we did enforce them as we could, so whatever happens.
And that's part of our affordable housing component? And if we're not taking care of it, and then we're pushing for more, we see. Got to correct this, and it's not right, these people. Some of, yeah, some of them are. Owners, and some of it is neighbors who just don't. Ones that don't, right, well, those existed. Hopefully we'll be dealing with that.
Right, sounds good.
I'm making your job tough.
No. No, trust me, this, this is not tough at all. I told you, I've been in law office for 21 years, so, dealing with rapes, shootings, homicide, Tommy's Station nine.
Makes us look like a cake block, huh?
Those are real emergencies, you know, so.
Yeah, that's for sure.
This is quality of life, public use and stuff, and. Obviously, I'm gonna make an appointment.
You know, one of the things that often comes up about this is people have these issues and they say, well, go talk to your neighbor. And I tell them, you know. It can go well, it could go really badly. The experts do. Report it to the city, let them handle it professionally. It's better that way, because I bet you run into some pretty hostile people.
The issue is, it depends on what the issue is, but it's also dependent, like, I've been very fortunate, I have a good relationship with a lot of the community.
Yeah, you're well liked.
So, well, I'm, I'm going to need to talk to, and I listen, I can talk to people. And you get a younger officer that doesn't. How they talk to each other, I mean, doing public speaking at the community meetings, you know, you've been at some of them. Anyways, for me.
I sound like I'm drunk, give a word, I'm nervous, right? I have to lean up against this thing or my legs start to.
I think it's okay, it's okay to be nervous.
Talk all the time, it's like.
Self abuse.
Yeah, it's okay to be nervous, but talking to some of these people, honestly, and when you, and it's about the business, right? I get it, if you have a complaint, or a traffic, or an RV, or whatever, baby. Understand what you can do to help out and do our part, but also we understand your side, and there's limitations to both sides. As far as how, how far we can go with enforcement and/or, and we just continue to our job. And we deal with all the complaints that come in. Everything, not just odor, we get signs, apron signs going down, window signs.
You get everything.
You get everything, that list is really long.
So, well, like I said, one thing I never, I, I heart for a guy, you know. Some shows.
And you guys do it well, you're really good.
I think so, thank you, I think so, I think so.
And that's why I tell people, don't take it into your own hands.
Right.
Let them speak to you. So far, so good.
Year two now, so we'll see. It's a four-year assignment for me, so.
Yeah?
Yeah. Then, uh, probably.
Oh, so you're stuck with you that long?
Ah, no, it's all good. Um, yeah, so, it's, it's something you, something you think I never thought about, or I'd be part of a work with, you know.
Interesting, though, I, I would, I could imagine it would be interesting.
It is, but at this point, it's also, it, it kind of like sets me for like, to kind of humanize, like, humanize me, like, in a sense of going back to the community. From being known to large, about some things that I've seen, that I've, I've been to a certain extent. But it transitions to the regular life, you know, civilian life.
So it's been really good, because on the other side.
It's different, it's different, it's different, it's, you look at everybody, it's different, yeah. So that, in that aspect, it's, it's been pretty good.
Well, I better go see if there's an agenda or something. I think it's much too. You're going to get started.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, all right, Paul, thanks, everyone.
Are you going to be a sitting camera?
Yeah. I was supposed to sit on it, um, so that it should advertise what I think. Really? They're absolutely against it. The state parties, yeah, because they're doing it. The, the gal that's organizing it seems so serious. And a foul event trying to review her, maybe. And so, and I got called. Got to stay in good braces and all this, I say. They, for some reason, are hard on events, because she used to do it at the, uh, American. Now she wanted to happen because she had silently tied to the presidential event, and already didn't like it, Justin Hicks. So I did hear, I interviewed her at the beginning. I did see that now it's like suspended by USW, so is that, is that the international, Jeff Barrow, or is that? International, uh, all of those things. So, check back with these candidates, see if. I don't know, like, look, I went to that last year. Can you, this is a very warm event.
Not anymore.
She let me pick one, I wanted to discuss, and, uh.
Yes. Thanks for the, yeah, I think those were, they're a policy.
No, no, but I.
They're just clean up issues, so. Always get to get that.
Thanks for the progress.
Because, no doubt, I think.
We already talked to the. I think it's pretty serious, the disdain, I think it's really serious. Because I know that. It's just hilarious to me that I have, I don't have examples. I don't know, I don't know if they'll be told, it's not like they. I don't want to make any fights.
So, you know. This is an initial, uh, they like to talk to, I think it's the, uh. The folks are really beautiful. Well, sure.
Good morning, how are you, good morning?
You know, I thought when we're. You know, what I was thinking, I want to get.
Yeah, no, uh, definitely put a, put a holster in this. Surrogates. Have a chat with each other, Rusty. Tell you how it feels. Oh, Rusty's not ahead of the park. Rusty's. It looks to. I got people that I need to maybe have to talk to now. I appreciate that.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Morning.
Can you hear us okay?
Right there.
So, um, if you want to get a credit tighter, feel welcome to do that. Good morning.
It's fine without it.
We might want you to use it.
Yeah.
So, thank you all for coming. Um, I'm guessing that a smaller crowd means that it's working better, am I dreaming? They all said yes, you're dreaming, okay. Um, so, what we thought we would do this morning is we would have Veronica and her staff walk you through the proposed changes. We know it was short notice, but have you all seen the red line version of what we've been working on? Yes, anybody not seen it?
Copies.
We have copies, if you want one, if you follow along, you all have it? Okay, great, then we'll turn it over to Veronica, and then we'll just have, um, we've done in the past, we'll just have an open discussion video about it.
Okay. So what we've done is we've gone through the current ordinance, and we made a lot of revisions to ensure consistency with the state. Um, as you know, the state went through three rounds of revisions before finally adopting their final set of regulations. So for us, it was important to make sure that we had symmetry with them. So we've updated our definitions and added new definitions that are consistent with the state. Um, we've added an entire penalties and enforcement mechanism to the code, which did not exist before, um, which is extremely important, just to make sure, um, for our legal operators, um, that they're being compliant, and also for the public, we have, um, added some odor control provisions, um, as well, penalties and, um, requirements that must be, be done if they are found in violation. Um, we're addressing the buffers between businesses and neighborhoods, and Flynn will go over that a little closer. Um, there's additional requirements for retailers regarding, um, disclaimers about organic products, track and trace, point of sale software. Um, we're adding, um, language for a green zone and additional tax incentives. Um, we also are going to be addressing labor peace agreements as well. So I'm going to let Flynn talk about the changes to, um, planning now.
So the Planning Commission discussed changes over three sessions, starting with a study session back on September the 11th, uh, and then in two public hearing sessions. And where they wound up in terms of their recommendations is relative to four different areas, and let me go through those. The first is relative to separation distance requirements. One of the things that the Planning Commission is recommending to the City Council Subcommittee is that there be a minimum 1,000-foot distance separation between cultivation, uh, type six, type seven, manufacturing uses, and residential uses. So again, a 1,000-foot separation distance for certain uses from residential. Um, secondly, in terms of commercial districts, and this is for dispensaries and lounges, the current code requirement is for a 500-foot separation distance and no more than three within, uh, 3,000 feet. What the Planning Commission has recommended is just to maintain the 500-foot separation distance, and they've actually recommended to eliminate the three within 3,000 feet. And so again, that's just for the dispensaries and the lounge uses. Uh, in terms of where uses are permitted, the Planning Commission has recommended that type six and type seven manufacturing, which is the extraction processes, and also cultivation be limited to the I-10 corridor area, and so that would be one of the significant changes that the Planning Commission has recommended relative to those particular uses. The type N, the type P, manufacturing uses would still be allowed in all manufacturing zones, uh, subject to separation distance requirements. The second thing that the Planning Commission worked on was the waiver criteria. Currently, we allow waivers from the separation distance requirements, but we don't really have any standards for doing that. And so the Planning Commission has recommended a number of standards, including, including the time period for which the building has been vacant, uh, trying to encourage the use of vacant properties. Uh, secondly, they've looked at having a requirement relative to the experience of the applicant in running a cannabis business. Uh, they're also requiring that a security program be reviewed and approved by the police department to alleviate any impacts that might come from a separation distance waiver. Um, and then one of the things that the Planning Commission added is that there would be no separation distance for the type six, type seven, and cultivation uses from residential. So they don't want that to be waived and to maintain the separation from residential districts. Third area that they looked at was notification requirements. What the Planning Commission has recommended is that cannabis uses post the properties 30 days prior to any public hearing or any approval of a cannabis, uh, permit. And then secondly, that notification would be sent out to residents and property owners within 1,000 feet 10 days prior to any action on a cannabis application. The fourth area that the Planning Commission looked at was relative to architectural review, uh, requiring architectural review for all cannabis facilities, and then requiring signage review by the Architectural Advisory Committee. So those were the four key areas that the Planning Commission looked at. Uh, again, separation distance was one of the key issues that they talked about, trying to address concerns about proximity to residential areas. There's also a number of minor administrative changes that the staff is recommending. Uh, number one is relative to parking requirements. We don't have parking requirements in our code currently for all types of cannabis uses, and so we're expanding that to make sure that that's adequately addressed. Uh, we're also moving some of the standards from the zoning code to the administrative code, uh, where Veronica's department will administer those standards. And then we are also aligning the language and the standards in the zoning code with the administrative code. So those are some of the administrative changes, and that summarizes what the Planning Commission has recommended.
And before we continue with that, just want to, so folks know, um, the Planning Commission recommendations are not Subcommittee recommendations. That's going to be decided by the whole council, that's how the process works. Um, some of them are probably different from what our recommendations were, but ultimately, that's a council decision, but Planning Commission is independent, we don't ask them, tell them what to do. Um, they'll make their recommendations, and the full council will make decisions on anything that's planning related and coming through, um, the commission. Uh, so we won't weigh in until the council meeting on that. And today, the goal is just to make sure everyone knows these issues and can give us feedback, so we have time to think about it before the council meeting. Obviously, we're not making any decisions today of any kind, but we want to get feedback from folks.
And when we get into our conversation about this, comment and question what the Planning Commission did as well as what we did, and we'll take all of that back to the council.
And I'm going to have Patrick go over our new permitting process.
Yeah, let's go. Okay, so I guess probably most germane, and by the way, I'm Pat Donigan from the City Attorney's Office, I know, I'm somewhat of a new face here, nice to meet everyone. Um, the, 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 the new ordinance as drafted, uh, has something called a conditional cannabis permit, and that's kind of the temporary permit, you know, that starts the process, most germane to, to the operators. Um, and so what, what that will be is that, that kind of gets your foot in the door. Um, that does expire in 12 months for existing buildings, um, and for newly constructed buildings, that's, i- i- it's 24 months now, obviously, you can come to council for a waiver, um, and that's all kind of laid out in the, in the, in the ordinance. Um, and let me take a look here. Um, for those with existing permits, those expire within 36 months, um, that too is subject to, you know, waiver to the council. Um, and so the process, Veronica, would be, you know, they, 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 they would come in, apply, get the conditional cannabis permit, um, I believe you, was that chart released? Okay, and so, I mean, that's, that's basically it, um, echoing what, what, what Veronica said, that, you know, the, the regulations and definitions have, have been put in there to attempt to be consistent with existing state regulations. Um, the main focus of this, at least the enforcement of this ordinance, is of course odor control. Um, and I believe that, you know, I think that's the key points that, that, that I wanted to raise. Um, to the extent anyone has any questions, of course, I'm here, ready to answer them.
How do we, I think, as we just start with first row, let people come up and we'll comment, and then we'll go back. Not going to put a normal time limit, but. Anything, anything you want. Notes are being taken, so we can get every, all the comments accounted for, all the comments.
Is this prepared? Yes, thank you, Lori Kibbe, I'm with Kings Garden. Um, a couple of things, I'm not so commenting on the licensing and the conditional use and all of those, mine are kind of more broad issues. Um, I noticed that in the ordinance, um, things related to people's past, I think, seems inconsistent with the social equity programs that are now being implemented across the state. Um, you reach back into somebody's, uh, past almost forever. Yes.
Just ask these questions, so my understanding was what we requested was that we don't, anything further than what state, the state.
Yeah, we revised, we revised the background to match what the state currently has.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, because when, in reading it, it's, it's not as clear.
And can we put in that, because the state will constantly be changing things, um, that our, our rules are no more, you know, no further than what the state does? So it's clear in the ordinance, so if the state changes it, ours automatically change? Um, we don't, we might not want to go where the state does, but we have to follow the state.
Okay.
Ours will not go beyond that.
Okay, so that was something that, in reading it, I wasn't clear.
And then, and I apologize for, for interrupting. Is that specific to, I guess, previous cannabis-related offenses, or more any type of offenses? Because I know that in, in the ordinance, it kind of, from what I understand, separates those two, that kind of says, if you have any type of, you know, cannabis-related offense, and then also some other type of, I, I guess what we were trying to get at is, you know, fraud, you know, some type of, you know, embezzlement, things like that. Was your concern both, which is, which is valid, or mainly just with the cannabis-related offenses?
Well, I mean, I think that's a really good point, because in social equity, you could have other issues that really are small infractions that still would affect, but fall outside of a cannabis infraction. And I think when you're looking at social equity, you have to kind of look at the big picture.
Yeah, except for the subdivide, we have, what we wanted was, we don't want to go past what the state.
Gathering information, it's just that. It's, it's. Hard for us to do it to some degree, but, and we're just gathering information, it's not going to be the be-all or end-all on the decisions that we make.
Sure.
Or who's getting a permit. Obviously, if we see a really bad record or bad business history, that's going to weigh into it. I mean, the logical stuff.
Yeah, of course, but I just was, in reading it, just wasn't as clear, so, um, I'll just read through my notes here, because you've addressed some of them already. Um, you have a 10% control, it was actually a little complicated to understand about the 20% interest, financial interest holder versus an owner. Um, and it's just, in my reading, and it was unclear, I think the state is still at the 20% for, uh, control, or financial interest holder, and you have a more stringent, uh, percentage, and, you know, uh, Kings Garden, given it has 210 investors. Uh, we, um, in just thinking about the 10%, we have all limited partners, and they don't really have much say. So just some distinction, I think, was unclear to me in the reading of it, as to what that 10% refers to.
It's really simply about disclosure, it's more about us in terms of, always want to know, we need to, for now, we need to know. Even, yeah, all applicants on everything.
Okay.
Um, if you look at our council packets now, we pretty much require transparency on who, who we're dealing with. Um, I don't have to tell you why, so, that whether it's 1% or 50%, irrelevant, it's just we need to know.
Okay, so just to think about the changes that are coming to the industry and what's happening with Safe Banking Act, and the potential for now private equity and family offices involvements, and some of the larger, you know, it's going to become commercialized. Um, just thinking ahead as to what that might mean to the viability of some organizations, it's just something to think about, because family offices and, uh, private equity funds are going to be way less, are going to be more reticent about disclosing their list. Now, I know the state currently requires that in your LLCs, you have to disclose everybody behind, but we're starting to see some of this pushback, and it's just something to think about.
I, I get that, right?
Yeah.
And, um, other projects, we actually go beyond state law and what people have to disclose. Conflicts, and potentially, all which could hurt business, and. Right, and the contract avoided. The dollars of loss to the business.
Yeah, that's going to be one area we're going to be having handled, because there's no reason for anybody to hide that. When they're coming to us about something. And if, if they want to, we really want to.
Well, you know, private equity is, they're private businesses, not publicly traded, and.
But when it comes to this business, because of the nature of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just, and I have two more points. Um, I noticed your renewal requirements are the 30 days, and if you miss the 30 days, then your license is revoked, and there's no, uh, coming back from that revocation. Um, is that intended for a particular reason, so companies?
Yeah. Else did we actually have?
Correct, it was that kind of drive.
Are you going to do notice? Are you going to do noticing?
We do. I send, anytime our renewals do, I always make sure that it's not on you to remember. We send a letter, hey, and we do it 60 days in advance, so.
Okay, cool.
Let's put that in, though, so if we, if we don't do it, it's, yeah, if we find a problem, we do it.
Okay, okay. And then my final point is that I noticed nowhere in the ordinance does it talk about proper employment of employees. Nowhere does it ever state that you need to comply with state law, unemployment law, wages, anything. And I know that's not really the state, you'd think it's implied, however, we're looking at an industry that, so I'm just bringing it up, that it was not in there at all.
It's easy to add a sentence that says.
You're in compliance with.
Our requirements may be different than state law, which you also need to comply with.
We're going to be careful that we don't do it in one ordinance and not others, and then, of course, need to do it. If you did it in here and you didn't do it in others, then it must not apply to others. So people have to apply with all state and local laws. I mean, it's just sort of a given.
Well, it's a given.
One thing we did add is, in addition to having to comply with the requirements of the state labor peace requirements, you have to apply it with the local ones, and that's something we're going to need to bring back in the next couple of months.
Great, thank you.
Oh, no, I think I'll be all right, thank you. I'm just curious when this will be going up and being voted on, allegedly?
The goal is the first meeting in November.
Okay, great. The current ordinance is.
Two weeks from now.
Yeah, the current ordinance, as it stands, still has 120-day operation requirement, correct? And then the license is revoked? Yes, until the new ordinance is voted in.
I guess so.
Yeah, that's original writing. It's a poison pill that was put in by the original city attorney that wrote the ordinance. You're welcome to look into that if you'd like.
No, no, what's your question, is the current?
I'm curious if it's still there.
Is in effect.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
Additionally, I'm just curious, yeah, that's really all I've got right now. I'll be sending all my written stuff in, so I really appreciate everything you've been doing. And, oh, one more thing. The laws are changing rapidly, as somebody spoke just earlier here. I think you should address the future federal laws that will be taking effect, because you guys are so busy, you don't know when you're going to get back to this. I assure you, I've been in DC quite a bit. Federal laws are going to be shifting pretty quickly with the Safe Banking Act, and the feds are going to be getting involved. And, you know, we would just want to keep it broad, just like you're going to keep it broad for the state laws that are going to change rapidly. I would just suggest that. That's all I have, thank you.
Remember, you know, this isn't the only time to comment, because you asked today, and you have more thoughts and ideas. Definitely, I especially really want to hear from you right now, as we take this.
I'll ask in what we're going to recommend to council. Who else?
Hi, Adam Spiker, I'm with the Southern California Coalition, here in particular, representing Harvest. And I guess my question is, with the changes you're adopting, they all make sense complying it with the changing state laws and, you know, having to at least hit that threshold. My question would be, what part of your changes would affect a pre-existing operator like Harvest that's already operating with a license? So like, I hear about parking changes and some minor zoning changes, like taking the three, you know, the three cap away from 3,000 feet. Is there anything in this that an existing operator needs to know about that they'll have to change or, you know, adopt to?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and jump in there on that question. In terms of zoning requirements, any changes to zoning requirements, it won't impact existing operating businesses. There is a standard practice within the administration of zoning regulations that uses that were established legally under the city zoning laws, when the zoning laws change, they're defined as legally non-conforming uses, so they can continue to operate, and there are no issues relative to that. So it's not a retroactive ordinance.
Okay.
At the end of the day, our intention was, your grandfather Dan, operating at the old ordinance, you're okay there.
Does that include the parking? I mean, parking can always get kind of tricky.
Yeah, it's going to include, if we gave you a permit.
Okay.
On whatever that was, you get to hold that, as long as you're good and secure.
Cool, thank you.
Sorry, I have one more question. I just know that we have the mics on and everything. Are these being recorded and subject to Brown?
But we're, yeah, this is an official subject.
Okay, so everything's being recorded?
Correct.
Subject to Brown? Great, thank you.
Correct. And that's why we want you to come up here.
Excellent, I really appreciate that.
Come on up.
Okay, cool.
Hello, my name is Marcella Ramirez with the United Food and Commercial Workers Union International, and I'm just wanting to make sure that I stay in my lane, so a lot of my issues will come in through the labor component that you all have included awesomely in your ordinance. My only kind of point of inquiry or point of clarification is to wonder how or if the council is deciding to kind of reiterate the recent signing of 1291 and its language into this ordinance with regards to labor peace agreements, and seeing if there might be any willingness to kind of amplify that language that came from the state level about two Fridays ago. That's pretty much it. Everything else seems.
What specifically?
First, sure, so 1291 has essentially now given a little bit more of a concrete definition as to who can have an attestation letter that says they will enter in their labor peace agreement, which is reserved now for folks who are below 20 non-managerial employees, versus folks now who are above 20 are going to have to have a 60-day window or face possible revocation in case they're trying to get a renewal for their next year. And so I just want to make sure if this ordinance is going to kind of make sure it amplifies or keeps in the spirit of that recent.
Mostly want to do the plan for folks who are here, so thank you. So we have a draft of a labor peace agreement that goes beyond what state law is, and we've looked at what other cities have done, and we've worked with your folks as well. And so the city attorney has that, has some, several drafts that were forwarded to bring a draft back to council, and that'll be a council decision. But we put in language and made it clear, you have to comply both with state and any local law that we enact. Okay.
Is everybody clear on these, on these labor peace agreements and understand them? Do you want us to walk through it a little bit?
Yeah.
You're all good with it? You understand it? No?
Do you want to?
Why don't we have?
Yeah, if somebody could explain this in layman's terms to everybody? Because I see, I see you a little glaze over.
And I'll do a great job.
Yeah.
So, good morning, my name is Anna Cabral. I'm also with UFCW, so United Food and Commercial Workers Union. I am with Local 1167, so we're the local that is here in both Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. And so thank you again for including the labor peace language. We do ask that while the state says 20, we are looking to hopefully lower the threshold to something closer to five, and I'm.
Will you walk that down from the start?
Yes.
And so, what all that exactly means?
Yes, so labor peace agreement basically means that there's an agreement that should come into, so the state right now requires, if you have 20 or more non-managerial employee, employees, you have to enter into a labor peace agreement with a bona fide union. Basically, that means that there's an agreement between the employer and a labor union like UFCW, where the employer promises not to interfere with workers' attempt to organize if they so choose so. And then the union agrees to not do any economic sanctions like a strike. So this is really a way for workers in the industry to fully choose for themselves if they would want to enter into a union or organizing effort with the guidance of a union without the employer interfering. So it's, it will make it so that employees have a free choice in that, no antagonistic relationship. And on our end, one of the things that we've liked to see ourselves as, as an asset to the employer, we want to make sure that the employer, that the different companies are successful, and we view that as having a good relationship with them. Okay.
Questions on that specifically? Yeah?
Does that mean that under 20 employees not require any of it?
Under.
If so, why?
Under, that's state law? That's what state law does? We're looking to do that differently.
Yeah, but, and I know state law says 20, but, I mean, even if you don't have the 20, we can still enter into a labor peace agreement, you just have to have more than three employees, and we would be willing to work with you.
Are you talking about management employees or just employees?
Yeah, we, just because it's being recorded, we can't talk from the audience. So if people want to come up and say something specifically on this, that's fine, but it has to be at the mic.
If you don't want to come up, we can pass the mic, but we need all these comments actually recorded.
So, yeah, so just for clarification, because I know a lot of people are asking about the differentiation, the differentiation between the classification of workers. Any workers who are waged, who cannot hire, fire, discipline, or set the schedule is considered a non-managerial employer under the classification of who can be organized or considered into a bargaining unit. And to kind of make it a little bit even simpler to digest, a labor peace agreement would almost be like a precursor into a collective bargaining agreement if the employees so choose. And the reason this is kind of a little bit unorthodox is because it's predicated on peace and neutrality, unlike 100 years ago in Chicago, and they were, you know, burning things down for a weekend. We're not here. You know, we're trying to make sure the industry catches up with, because it is going to be a backbone industry. And so a lot of the experiences that workers have gone through, coming from an illicit market to a gray market to now in this market, kind of requires an effort to maintain the culture of cannabis that might, that might be overseen or kind of left out when folks attempt to kind of like make cannabis a little bit more corporatized or mainstream, but then they forget things that are, you know, essential into giving that legitimacy, that skill, respect towards the worker, who is anybody between like a person who works on the floor, the sales shop, or we also represent people from seat to sale, or also cultivators and lab technicians as well.
And I don't want to spend too much time, because we're not adopting any, our labor peace agreement as part of this. That'll be coming probably in January with some other things. So it's just, all we did on this was we put in that people have to comply with local law as well as the state law. So if the local law goes further and has a lower number than state law, it would be applicable here. So that's the only thing we're doing currently in this ordinance.
And if you have more questions on this, just call Patrick.
Yeah.
Right? Just to learn about it. It is coming down the line, and it will.
And we will, and that will be part of, there will be a public meeting on any of that.
But that won't be coming.
You have to come to the mic.
It won't be coming November 6th.
Yeah, yeah.
Real quick, I just wonder if it makes sense for you guys to acknowledge the ALRB as it relates specifically to cultivation workers, where there's a different set of rules for how those folks get organized, and maybe you guys want to bring that up. But that is a thing that you might want to get out ahead of.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll, we'll get into those weeds later when.
These weeds? Yeah, we'll get in those weeds later.
Independent.
Okay.
Anyone else on anything?
Anything yet?
On anything within?
Okay, we'll start right behind.
Anyone? That row, we'll go this way.
Hi, my name's Julie Canby, and I'm going to be hopefully opening a place called The Morgue, dispensary and lounge. Several questions that are kind of specific to me, but so I'm not sure this is an appropriate time.
No.
Talking to right to the mic.
Yeah, you got to kind of come close to them.
Okay, I'm just wondering if I can ask some short, specific questions, unless you want me to email them to you.
No, 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 questions?
Okay, great. Let's see, if the cultivation and manufacturing are eliminated from my area due to the elimination of the, no, no, that's a separate thing. I have a micro-business license through the state. I'm not sure how that would work after that, if I would no longer have a license through the state, if I'm unable to operate more than, you know, two licenses, for example.
We can govern distances in our own city, so your.
But you said, it says that it has to be in the green zone? Or, no, no, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the green zone is still something we're working out. The green zone brought more complications simply because of the geography in Palm Springs, and also because of getting utilities to a lot of the land that we originally wanted to roll into the green zone. We don't want to offer a green zone that's unusable. And, you know, if somebody has to spend millions of dollars getting utilities there, it's, it's not going to do well for them. So your license from the state is different than what we, is very different than distance requirements. It's just going to be two separate issues.
Okay, so I guess also if you are considering, I guess, there's the N and P labels on these and other designations, correct?
In terms of the type of operation?
Yes.
Yeah, we can explain that, yeah.
I think if I understand the rules correctly, I would be considered N or P. And so there's a consideration of eliminating that in the non-green zones, and I just wanted to at least put in my vote to keep it.
One of the things that the planning commission talked about was to allow the smaller businesses to type N and a type P within industrial districts in the central core city area, not just restricting them to the green zone, because those were shown to have less of an impact relative to odors. So that's one of the recommendations of the planning commission, is still allow small businesses that don't have the odor impacts.
It's, odor is driving everything right now, because that's, coming up is our real problem. You know, we will continue to be as relaxed as we can about distances for business that just distribute and sell. But any kind of manufacturer is going to, is, we're going to.
Except those.
Except those, we're going to really scrutinize. If you create odor, it's a problem. If you don't, we're going to work with you as much as we can in every way.
Thank you.
We've been doing that right along.
Excellent. Let's see, God, it's escaping my mind right now.
You can come back up too, if you want.
Okay, all right.
We'll let you come back up.
Thanks.
Yeah. Next, in that row, row two. Any questions? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, I'm Steven Viatic, I'm with Reefer Madness. I've got a approved application. Also, I have a CUP that's in process, and the intent of my business is dispensary, lounge, cultivation, manufacturing. I am in the M1 zone, and one of my concerns is, in the proposed zoning ordinance changes, it's proposing to strike out cultivation and manufacturing other than the type N and type P from the M1 zone. So I do have some concerns there, and I'm wondering if what, what is proposed currently is set in stone, or if there may be some more debate on that.
It's a recommendation from the planning commission. Council hasn't adopted it, so that'll come to council. But Flynn, do you want to weigh in on, so someone who's in process, I don't know how, what the planning commission has recommended in that situation.
In terms of applications in process, the planning commission did not address that issue. That tends to be a policy issue that city council would want to address at some point in time. If you recall, when we last made changes to the zoning code back in December of 2017, there was a certain provision within the code that allowed applications that were in process to continue through the process. U.S. City Council may discuss and decide to do something similar with applications that are in process.
Okay.
And, you know, historically, people in the pipeline, we take, we take individually, and Veronica works very closely with them. Our goal is to not put you through hell, rip you out of the pipe, and send you on your way. So as we move forward, we've been, by and large, honoring those that got in at a certain point in the process. This changed so radically and so quickly, we're essentially trying to keep up with the issues that arise as we're, as, as we're now starting to go online with all the different types of businesses. So if you're in the pipeline, you have very specific concerns, give Veronica a call directly, and she'll, she'll walk you through what may or may not occur. But we tend to show a lot of leniency for those who are in process now.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
We'll just skip Jocelyn.
Well, I might have to come up more than once then, since I'm, how are you all? This is a lot, and I wasn't necessarily prepared to talk about planning issues, because I thought we were just doing admin, but I think there's some overlap. And again, yeah, I could talk for a long time, but I'm not going to. The first thing I want to ask you is cannabis overlay zone, green zone, grow zone, I-10 corridor, does anyone have a definition of where this is and what this is? I have a concern, I've expressed before, that the cart's before the horse in this. If you put these terms, and you need to pick one, I think that's consistent, but into ordinances and the thing doesn't exist yet, how can you, how do we know how to support that? So it would be great to, both in the zoning ordinance and in this regulatory ordinance, to be consistent and also clear, and then not make changes based on the fact that there will be some future zone, without knowing what that is. So what I'm saying is if you. So, what I'm saying is if you, in the zoning ordinance, say you can't cultivate or do type six or seven manufacturing, except in this area, and there's no area, I have a hard time with that.
Flynn, do you want to? How we do that through the zoning regulations is by defining in each zoning district what use is allowed. So, in the planning discussions, we've been talking generally about in the I-10 corridor, but specifically in the draft ordinance itself, it identifies that type six, type seven, and cultivation uses are allowed in the EI and the M2 zones, which only occur in the I-10 corridor.
EI and M2, and that's the definition for now?
And that is the definition for now. As we resolve the issues relative to infrastructure, then city council can go ahead and establish a definition for a green zone and apply any other incentives in that area as well.
Okay.
But for the time being, it will be defined by zoning districts.
Okay, and so, with respect to the regulatory ordinance, it uses overlay zone and it says grow zone, both of those are.
We will coordinate those.
If you could make those marry, that would be great, and really what we're talking about is EI and M2, and just be consistent across the board if that's what we're talking Again, I got problems with the waiver criteria big time, but that's in the zoning ordinance, so maybe this is not the place or time for that. I don't know.
Because we had our thoughts on that, you know, what kind of things council should consider, but they weren't hard and fast rules, they were meant to be guidelines, so people had some sense before. What we didn't want was people just spending money, going through a process on things that are very unlikely to get waived. So, we wanted to give them the kind of things that are more likely to get waived to help the future businesses know when they should make that effort.
Sure.
Waivers need criteria to work from.
Waivers absolutely need criteria. I agree with you. I'm just not super happy with the ones that the Planning Commission came up with. So, the amended version, the amended amended version now, the last version that we were able to get after the October 10th, talks about a one-year vacancy. If the purpose of criteria is to ensure that no tenant is evicted by a landlord to replace with a cannabis tenant, then the criteria should speak to that and not eliminate properties based on how many years something's been vacant, whether it's been used as a cannabis use, because that's the new version now, or not used as a cannabis use.
We're actually looking at that from the other way around.
Okay.
So, we're looking at preferred criteria.
Preferred criteria, okay.
So, if we oblided buildings, you understand that difference?
I do, but that's not what we've seen. No, I get it. I want to hear.
Okay.
What are your preferred criteria, or can I ask that?
Buildings that are sitting around with no use, that have been sitting empty for a long time.
But without respect to how many specific years?
No, not necessarily. I mean, the longer they've been sitting there, the more we want to put someone in them. So, those are going to, that falls under the preferred side.
Okay.
We're trying to avoid vacant buildings.
Yeah, for sure. There's a criteria on necessity to serve the residents within a census tract, and that, again, I think they're trying to emulate this notion of like liquor licensing. And you know, when we've talked about this, that this is a tourist destination, that that.
Yes, and.
I don't need to go through that.
The census tract for our central business district, I think, allows two liquor licenses. We have 104. I've never seen one that, we didn't go, the process didn't happen where it was waived, so I think emulating the census tract is not necessarily useful.
Good to hear, on record. The experience requirements are, why am I making Lori laugh? The experience requirements, I understand to a point, but two years of experience in a business that's only been around for two years seems problematic, especially for equity applicants who won't have any. So, since there's no social equity program at this time, what the Planning Commission did was speak to a social equity program that we're just developing. So, I think that that's a problem in terms of the criteria, and really shouldn't be. And again, if it's preferred criteria, and if you flip it, great, more experience, better.
Better preferred criteria.
I totally get that, but that's not, that's new to me.
It's fine that we walk through these individually, but realize that it's just criteria. You don't have to meet, those aren't hard and fast guidelines. So, we're looking at a collection of criteria. You don't meet any of it, it's probably going to be a problem.
Right.
If you meet a lot of it, you're going to be considered.
Okay.
It's going to be common sense. You know, as we, as you know better than anybody, as we've been developing the policy on this, we've been as loose as we can be with it.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're all kind of doing it together.
Yep. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's very helpful. So, I spoke to the issue of green zone. There was discussion, and I think it was fair, at Planning Commission regarding small-scale manufacturing and small-scale cultivation versus treating every cultivation exactly the same, and every type six and seven, frankly, exactly the same. And I get the threshold is around potential odor, but I still feel like we're doing policy from a fear versus a reality. So, I want, I'm just, this is my blah blah blah.
No, no, no. This is all good stuff. At the end of the day, we're going to end up with zero tolerance on odor.
Oh, you already, you already have it.
But I mean, we're going backwards now. In the future, there is going to be, I mean, anything that gets approved now, there is zero tolerance. We're now walking back and cleaning up the existing businesses. So, from my perspective, I don't care if they're large or small businesses, it's all about odor.
Yeah, and just add that, you know, the Planning Commission was looking at it and not the ordinance, where we put in significant fines and suspensions for not meeting the odor requirements. So, I'm just saying, they were looking at it absent that, and so, council will be looking at both together.
Sure. I don't think, I think that they were very aware of that, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, if there is no businesses like this, small businesses like this, there will be no way to know whether this is something that's containable. That's all I'm saying. Like, if you're at zero tolerance and you're going to negative tolerance, then we're not, we are putting basically in place those folks who are operating now, whether, and if they're the ones in some cases that are causing some odor problems, there will be no other operators allowed to show you that they can do this. That's all I'm saying, if you understand.
Yes. And right now, the Planning Commission recommendations aren't necessarily lined up with the way the ordinance works. And Jeff and I will probably be asked to clean that up.
Okay.
You know, to have those two pieces come together before we make our final recommendations to council.
Okay. So, the last thing I'll say, because I know there's other people in the room who want to talk, is about enforcement schemes, and I understand there's like two somewhat separate enforcement schemes potentially, but they don't play out all that detailed in the ordinance right now. One is for violations that are non-odor related, I suppose, like everything but odor, and then there's odor, where it shows you, you got a $10,000 fine for the first one, and then it goes up after that. And I'm wondering if you're gonna maybe thresh that out a little bit in terms of how many citations in a certain period of time, with a better sense of how this will be enforced and if there is a compliance period.
It's pretty spelled out.
It's sort of spelled out, but I think it could be better.
What specifically? Because we, we thought we were.
We're actually working on creating a specific several page list and having it as a separate rules and regulation document, and it will be outlined more specifically than you can imagine. We're really taking a lot of time to pay attention to detail, so there's no question.
Okay, so you'll do a regulatory sort of.
Veronica, have we seen the latest greatest on that yet, or are you still?
We are still finishing it. Patrick and I have been working on that.
And then, just to follow up on that, but that will be towards, geared towards the non-odor related offenses?
Okay.
The odor related offenses are pretty well articulated.
Well, they're, yeah, so they're articulated only in the sense of if you get your first citation, if it's a validated odor violation, you issued $10,000 fine, you have 30 days to cure, do you then? Like, this is, maybe this is an offline conversation. I just want to see how this would play out with respect to getting to a revocation.
Jocelyn, you know what I'd love to ask, if you would? You can keep coming back up, but I want to, in case, in case other people have to leave, I want to give everybody a chance.
You knew, you knew that was coming.
Let's let other people come in, and you can come back, okay? Anyone else in that row want to come up? Let's walk through, and then we'll have repeats. Row three.
Sorry, I should have stood up sooner. My name's Paula Auburn. Thank you very much for having met with the One PS Work Group on cannabis. And as you know, we're still together and still working. We have been very consistent and very simple in what we have asked for for protection of the neighborhoods and residents. It's not onerous. It's not everything we would have liked to have asked for, but it's been consistent, it's doable, and it's realistic. The Planning Commission has folded into their recommendations some of the provisions that we asked for. We are supporting those recommendations, and we will be asking the full council to adopt those recommendations exactly as they have come from the Planning Commission. I have one question of clarification, and let me talk about transparency. For everyday average residents who don't deal with codes and zoning codes on a daily basis, it is extremely difficult to follow the interlinkages from one ordinance to another ordinance, and it's a little bit like getting lost in a bowl of spaghetti. And I keep trying to find some way to simplify, you know, an executive summary or something that allows those of us who don't deal with this on a day-to-day basis to get a broader understanding of what's going on.
You're talking with respect to tracking changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Or just understanding, and I haven't come up with a way, so I'm not asking you to do that, but I will say it's a concern.
I think one thing is, in the staff report, before this comes to council, to make sure that, you know, we're really laying out what this does in a way that people can understand, and that's really important.
And I wish I had an answer or a system for doing that, and I don't.
Veronica, what if we do a matrix?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to make more work for the staff.
No, no, no.
It doesn't like they're looking for work to do.
We've already been working on a summary to attach to the staff report that's going to go through each section, like definitions, enforcement, show what's been added, and what exceeds state law, or what meets it. So, that's a document we're actually working on.
And part of it's just the referral system. You go into some of the clauses and provisions, and it's like, this affects Code 920301. It affects Code 94101.6, and it's just like, how much time do I have to spend in the library looking this up? And I actually have worked in redevelopment.
That's a problem for us too. You know, when we look at a red line, red lines are no fun. But I think because we're moving so quickly on this, maybe if we create a simple matrix, existing law change, existing law change, and if you have time for that, Veronica, and maybe on a one or two pages, just comparing what we had and where we're going.
And so, I've got a very simple question, just to make sure I'm on the right track. There are two ordinances that are going to go to the council on November the 6th. One is this cannabis ordinance, and one is the zoning. And the Planning Commission has been working on the zoning. What you men, you made that fabulous presentation, that was zoning. So, from residents' perspectives, we need to be tracking both of those as they go forward, okay? And it does not appear on my preliminary go-through on the draft revisions of this ordinance that it incorporates what is in the zoning ordinance. And I don't know if there needs to be cross-linkages between those or not, because we, because we're supporting the Planning Commission recommendations, we've made an assumption that those are somehow in the cannabis ordinance or are implied in the cannabis ordinance.
So, what we will try and do in our staff reports is, again, simplify and identify what the changes are. Keep in mind that these two ordinance need to work in parallel, they need to work together, and others have made those comments, that our terminology needs to be the same in both ordinances. Maybe what we can do, Veronica and I would be happy to sit down with you prior to the city council meeting on the 6th.
That would be great.
And review those with you.
Probably be a small group of us.
Yeah, absolutely. We're happy to do that.
Because the separation distances, the manufacturing six and manufacturing seven types of those not being allowed near neighborhoods.
Correct.
No matter what the size is, they all produce odor when that's the process that they're involved with. And the notification requirements, so that residents in a broader area are notified that there's going to be a cannabis facility. Again, you've heard us go through our very simple four-point list, and we haven't left that. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity now to meet with you, but also to have a broader discussion. It's always interesting to hear what the industry people bring forward, and it is a balancing act, but I will tell you that neighborhoods and residents really feel like they've been thrown under the bus.
So, one thing I can promise you, we understand it's complex, and we understand bringing two ordinances together is complex. We're going to walk through it very, very slowly when it actually comes to council. And Jeff and I are going to spend a lot of time beforehand making it palatable and more understandable.
Thank you.
Anybody, row three? Row four? Come on up.
My name is Tempe Essel, and I live in the tennis club area, and I've attended all of the Planning Commission meetings regarding this issue. And one thing came to light today that I was not aware of, and maybe you can help me with this. In the retail area, I wasn't aware that we, that you guys had suggested banning the 3,000, no more than three businesses in 3,000 feet. And that concerns me as a long-term, you know, long-time resident, that the downtown area could become way too populated with retail stores. And I think that that doesn't speak well to our community.
And that's a recommendation from Planning Commission, not from the subcommittee at this point, but Flynn, do you have a sense? I know we talked about this before, what, how many that would allow?
Yes, what we did is, we did a series of separation maps.
Yeah, and I remember the maps were great.
Exactly.
Are you getting rid of those maps now?
No, we're not getting rid of those. What we found is that the 500-foot separation distance alone would be adequate to provide enough separation between the businesses, that the three per 3,000 was actually overkill and didn't really help with the saturation issues per se.
Okay.
And so, again, we'll continue to show those separation maps as part of the city council hearings on the matter.
Great. The other question I had, and this goes back to the vacant buildings, and again, to the 500-foot, I mean, if we've got a lot of vacant buildings, then that goes into the same play within the same maps, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay.
Row five, come on up.
My name is Edmund Chan. I.
Right into the mic, sir.
Yeah. Hi. I'm a little concerned, I kind of heard you address businesses that are already in the CUP process, and that's what we're in, but it seems like some of this is really going to affect us where we are. We had a facility where we had dispensary, lounge, cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing, all in separate units. We're in an M1P zone over on Research Drive, and I know that we had, we did our CUP meeting, and they were concerned about distance. But what would happen with us? We've put a lot of money into the research and trying to deal with the odor control, and we are in the current CUP process, but we're concerned about if this is going to affect us.
So, I think Jared talked to this. I mean, in the past, people at a certain point in the process are allowed to continue through, but that's a council decision. They'll be made at the meeting on the 6th.
Historically, if you are well into the process, and we get that you're serious about this, and that you have a lot of investment in it, we have favored that. If we have applicants who have simply applied for a permit and not done anything about that permit, that's not going to weigh well with us. But if, in your case, again, call Veronica specifically about it, we hand-hold on those cases.
Okay, one of the things we want to let you know, we did wait for a long time because we had existing tenants in our building that were there for a long time, and they requested us to, you know, if we could work with them. So, we let them stay there for many, many months so that we wouldn't just kick them out. You know, they were an existing business there, so that was part of our delay also in what we were doing. So, okay, so I can call Veronica?
Always. Call Veronica, and in very sticky cases, Veronica brings them to us, and we talk about them together.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, thank you very much.
You bet.
My name is Hank Bates, and I'm representing a landlord. So I have a question, and I also have some input. I read somewhere in the ordinance that you can't sell cannabis after 10:00 p.m. Is that correct? Is that a state law or a state?
A state law.
Okay, I was wondering where that came from.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And then also in the remedies for enforcement, there's a penalty to the landlord if the landlord doesn't evict. But it says the penalty is $10,000 every 30 days, right? I think that's how it reads. I could be wrong. It was a long document to absorb.
Give me one second to find the exact specific provisions, but yes, the intent and purpose of this was to bring in the landlord as well, so that, you know, to, you know, increase the city's toolbox in terms of enforcement.
Right, but keep in mind that if you're going to penalize the landlord every 30 days, eviction doesn't happen overnight. An eviction can take, you know, six weeks to two months, depending on how the eviction moves through the court.
Correct.
So I don't think penalizing the landlord during an eviction process is reasonable.
Correct. And we'll make sure, if that's not what it states right now, that if the landlord is in the process of evicting, that the city is not going to hold it until the specific time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just show us that it's happening.
Yeah, if it's in process, absolutely.
Perfect. And the other one is, I just wanted to make the statement that, you know, Bloomberg News, New York Times, LA Times, they're saying illegal operations for cannabis in California are thriving because of all the permitting processes, delays, and all the things that are happening in the cities. And I just hope Palm Springs doesn't get caught in that trap of allowing the illegals to thrive, the illegal operations to thrive, while the legal operations, who are going through the process, you know, get discouraged and whatever.
Right. And I want to say to you guys, they're not thriving here.
Yeah.
No, and that's an important point. And in fact, last night, we approved keeping, giving, loaning one of our police officers to the Riverside County DA's Drug Enforcement Unit, where the only city in the Coachella Valley who does that. And, you know, last month, you know, they found an illegal grow with 1,200 plants in the northern part of Palm Springs. And of course, those don't have any of the odor control pieces. We're not doing, we don't know what's there unless they find it. So it's important that, for our city, that we're helping to fund that effort to find and close down the illegals. Obviously, illegals also are not testing their product for safety, so it's dangerous for consumers as well. But it's really important, and I hope, you know, we all step up to help close down the illegals, because that's going to be essential.
You know, it's hard to hide in Palm Springs, and we're catching them. And funny enough, we're catching them through our enforcement arm unintentionally. So say a resident complains about odor, and we go out and check, and what we're finding is, we go to the legal business, and there's no odor, but it just so happens, two doors down in that same complex is where we'll find the illegal operator. So we're cracking down very, very hard. The reason that we are helping Riverside is because we're helping ourselves. To your point, this statistic blew my mind. Over 50% of all sales, all cannabis sales are still illegal sales. And it's thriving because they don't have to go through what you all have to go through. So that's what we're dealing with.
And there was another one of my questions, is, you know, we don't live in a bubble, and of course, we're, you know, we're bordering Cathedral City, we're bordering Desert Hot Springs. How does this ordinance compare with their ordinances, do you think? Or has it been compared to their ordinance?
You know, they're all different. We all, we all work differently. We do look at what they're doing, and earlier on, Jeff and I and our staff were actually meeting with Cathedral City and Desert Hot Springs and comparing notes. We haven't done that lately, but we might want to do that again. It was helpful. But again, you know, hopefully, we're all learning from each other.
And lastly, I just want to say thank you for having these meetings.
Sure.
Before I start, I wanted to maybe point out something Jocelyn had mentioned. I think that the Planning Commission had talked about something about, you can't go into the property that had been vacant. But I think they even said it couldn't have been a cannabis business before, and I just think that's silly. If a cannabis business failed, and so I wanted you to look into that. I could be wrong.
The recommendation that they can't go into a vacant building if it was cannabis prior?
They established a different time limit that if it had been a cannabis business, and put a shorter time limit for any other use.
So I think if you could look into that, I appreciate it. I think it's sort of redundant. It's...
Again, remember, we haven't seen this yet, so we're hearing...
They're doing a great, they're doing a great job. I mean, quite honestly, they're dealing with things that really shouldn't, they shouldn't be dealing with, that are more code enforcement, in my opinion, okay? So I'm here to talk about odor control. I don't really want to convince you because you're leaving us. I need to convince this man. And I know that Flynn was able to participate in the meeting, obviously, where we had an odor control expert come, who I feel sets the standard. There is a company that came and spoke to the Planning Commission, and they described how they can build an 80-acre outdoor nursery and contain the odors at the property line, which are 800 feet from the nursery. So I refuse to allow the city to look silly by saying to everyone, "We can't control odors." The reality is, when the baby's diaper is full of poop, you don't put the baby in the other room. You change the diaper. And that's the analogy that I'm looking at here. There is a company out there called Urban Grow. They spoke before the Planning Commission yesterday, and I'm not making this up. They have the science. This is science. This is serious. You're putting businesses at risk and putting them out of business on a premise that is invalid. You're stating that you cannot control odors. But the fact of the matter is, in San Luis Obispo just last week, they approved a giant outdoor grow, outdoor nursery, because it does not...
Rick, can I just interrupt you? I don't want to have an...
Always interrupting. I've never had been interrupted in public comments before. You're the only person to have ever done this to me.
Well, I just want to say something to you, because it might help. It's a discussion. And we're going to let you keep going without a time limit, okay?
Okay, well, I'm in a hurry, but I had been here four times before the Planning Commission and the city, trying to explain to them that they continue to make laws based on the fact that odors cannot be controlled. So I will end that...
So, Rick, I am going to interrupt you. We have never said we can't control odor. I don't know where you're getting that from.
Then why are we moving businesses?
We're not.
Why are we creating zones that don't allow businesses in them on the basis that they...
We haven't done it yet.
Okay, so, there we go. I want to make sure that we don't. And at the same time, as I had discussed with the Planning Department, when we look at the cannabis businesses that are out there and available to do business in our town, and we create zoning laws, I think that there are, that a generalization on some of the businesses should be more deeply looked at, and I'll use a point of testing facilities. So we have a lot of places in the city of Palm Springs that are not zoned for certain types of businesses, and we want to move them. And I do think that if we look a little closer, and I saw it happen in the Planning Commission yesterday, they actually allowed a one business to be approved because of the fact that it was making edibles, and it wasn't emitting odor. So I just think a more succinct look at each individual business would be helpful. I'm just trying to protect the industry because we keep talking about the green zone. And this will be my last comment here. The future for cannabis is in the North Palm Springs area. And I would ask that the city really put all of their might and effort to work with the Water District, and Edison, and the Gas Company, and all the utilities, and really make it a push, a real serious push. Because if we do that, then everyone sees a future. I have a property myself out in North Palm Springs, and the hardest thing is getting my building built for people to come and come there. So I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt. And one last thing. The whole community is not in Sina. In Sina has a very, all citizens have a right to clean air, fresh air. But comments made about the industry beyond fresh air, about the type of industry it is, or the people that work in the industry, that I've seen mentioned over the past few weeks, are uncalled for. So the sooner we can clean up the odor control, the sooner we'll stop dividing our community. Thank you.
Amen. That's all we're after, Rick. We recognize odor is our problem. And by the way, we can't control what comments the public makes. All we can do is solve the problem, and odor is the problem. So thank you.
Anyone else that wrote? Okay.
Come on up.
I haven't talked to you guys in a while. Grant Wilson, Ranch Club Estates resident, termed-out sustainability commissioner and managing principal of LSA, an environmental planning firm here in Palm Springs. So odor keeps coming up, and I, sorry, I didn't have a chance to take a look at this until this morning, but one of the things that jumped out at me is the discussion about mitigation associated with odor, plus the fact that that's in Section 555, 435. And maybe I'm missing something here, because this is a pretty lengthy document, but under odor control on page 32, "Permittees shall provide inadequate odor control plan," et cetera, et cetera. So you've talked about zero tolerance, but I'm curious if there might be an opportunity, given the fact that lead agencies have an opportunity not to necessarily follow the standard appendix G of the SEQA guidelines, to amend the SEQA guidelines for Palm Springs, specifically because we have so many cannabis facilities, to address odor control under air quality? Because that has recently been addressed in some updates to the SEQA guidelines. I think it was just within the past couple of years. But it's general. And in this case, I think, because I'm a SEQA guy, I do NEPA as well as SEQA, but I like SEQA because there are specific thresholds. And if we were to have specific thresholds associated with odor in our guidelines, I think that would be beneficial to applicants and the whole process in terms of going through these types of applications, so.
Right now, it's simply you can't smell, you shouldn't be able to smell it beyond the property line. And, you know, Flynn, I don't know if you want to talk about the SEQA connection on this, or, but essentially, that is the threshold at the moment.
What we might want to do...
Well, if I could add to that, though, that's not a SEQA threshold. That is something that's been implemented as a condition in the permit approval process.
Our minimum standard. What we might want to do, Grant, is sit down with Veronica and look at what we might do relative to SEQA evaluation of cannabis facilities. In particular, the conditional use permit process for manufacturing and cultivation does require a SEQA evaluation, so that would be where it would be most applicable. So maybe let's sit down and discuss.
Sure.
Come on up.
I live in Sina, and I'm a government affairs person for a large grow facility. Would like to ask two questions. Well, one is, there is ways to do odor control. My background is in environmental technology. There's many ways. If you go buy bakeries, commercial bakeries like Bilbo or Wonder Bread or any of those, you can no longer smell bread. Because this new technology's out there that has this, that you can take the odor away from cannabis, and you'll not smell it. In Sina, we would never smell it with the new technologies. So there is available technologies. It's being used all the time. So you have thermal oxidizers, you have water control systems, you have all different, you have negative air control systems, multiple ways to do this. Some are more expensive than the others, but it is possible. And some of the guys who are building buildings, you might want to think about having this put in, when you're building it, for grow houses, pre-do it, and it makes it easier for the customers to come in. Secondly, the company I represent, they have a clinic on, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, they have a clinic on site. So they do acupuncture, they do massage, they do with CBD, and they do a lot of people with cancers, prostate cancer, colon cancers and things, and it's a helping thing. There is no provision to allow a clinic to be operated within a dispensary or adjacent to a dispensary or part of a dispensary, because we use CBD oil, we use other things. The other issue is, when you have that, you can have the clinic, if you're able to get the clinic, then you have to have the clinicians be able to open the product and be able to use it on them. So the law is also written that way, that I can't, I can't open it. So in the grow house, or in the smoke room, you can buy it over on this side, come over here and smoke it. They can't bring it to you over there and open it and allow you to smoke it. You know what I mean? So it's a separation. As a, if they come in and they bring the CBD oil into the clinic, they could open it themselves, and then we could use it. But I can't sell the product to them and do the massage and do all that. Does that make sense? Yeah, so that's an issue that we're trying to come up with. And about 60, 60, 70% of the patients are cancer-related, because it does give them benefits. I can give you multiple, multiple studies from AMA to everything on this. So I would encourage you guys to think about how you can incorporate in a way for a company like ours to come into Palm Springs to say, "I can have the clinic on the side."
So that sounds like an anomaly situation we haven't heard yet. If you would call Veronica offline on that, and Veronica bring that, and we'll bring that as a concept to the meeting as well.
Yeah.
That sounds like it would be easy to solve. We just haven't had that question yet.
Yeah, we have one in Ottawa, we have them in Oakland, we have them around the state, so we could mirror the same language if you wanted.
Yeah, and if you could send that language in, on what those locations do, obviously, the medical, you know, uses like that make a lot of sense.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Thanks so much.
Anyone else back there?
Back row, anybody?
Hi, I'm Michael Fine, Garnet Properties. I wanted to build a little bit and get a little more clarification and bring up something related to the idea of zoning as it relates to some of these uses, like type six and seven manufacturing cultivation that is being proposed along the I-10 corridor. The fact that currently, the recommendations are to tie it to specific zoning, such as EI, which I actually think only applies to one property owner, and then M2, some of us who have been, gone through the CUP process, have been approved for manufacturing and cultivation alike, and our property is M1P, for example, although it is along the I-10 corridor. And if the criteria is a consideration of distance to residential, or other things that maybe are safety-related, or other reasons that you're looking at applying it to specific areas, and if green zones aren't already being, you know, determined as to where those are going to be, and I assume along the I-10 corridor, even on the south side, that would be a consideration. I'd like to ask that, that there is a consideration to expand those uses within other zoning, even if there are more specific geographic limitations that the city wants to apply to that. And I'd like that consideration for those reasons. Thank you.
My name is Joy Brown Meredith. I've lived in beautiful Palm Springs since 1978, and I've owned a business in downtown since 1987, and I've owned a dispensary now for three long years. There's a couple of things I wanted to address today, and I think that a lot of them have already been, but I still want to chime in. Curiosity about where an overlay zone would be. Also, where one of my licensed properties that is non-operated... where an overlay zone would be. Also, where one of my licensed properties that is non-operational is located on Micro Road. It is zoned either M1 or M1P. It is not M2 or EI. And for multiple acres, there is nobody around it. So, if you're considering this zone change here regarding cultivation and manufacturing, this particular area is not included in that zone for whatever the reason. So, I want to bring that up. I also want to bring up that I appreciate all of the input that the residents have given all this time, as I am one of them as well, regarding odor. But a lot of this is based on when there was no odor control happening, and I, I just want to, to ask that that is considered as well. You know, now that there is odor control in place and it is required, I'm curious as to how that's going now. Has that been helpful enough that now we're planning on really changing everything based on that, but have we already addressed the situation, and to what level have we addressed that at this point? I don't know that answer. Another thing that came up in a planning commission meeting that I wanted to mention is the size of a cultivation. So, if you're talking about a 10,000-square-foot cultivation building as opposed to maybe something that's a 2,000-square-foot or something like that, then would that still be treated in the same way when it would not necessarily provide the same objectionable odors and everything? So, I think in this case, size does matter, and it needs to be considered. And also, just on an extremely personal level, because I know that I have been slow in getting two of my properties operational, I could write a book about why it's taken this long, the people that I have not done business with and why I haven't done business with them as I thought that I was going to. But I, in number 5.55.080, where you're discussing the, you know, how long somebody would have after they have a license to get started, I understand why, and I understand it's because others, because then of separation, maybe can't, can't have a space there. But I was just wondering if that starts from the time of the new ordinance, or does that start from the time that those licenses came? And I know that none of these things are, are actually happening yet because they haven't been voted on by council, but just my personal problem that I realize that I made a problem myself, but I, I just have not been able to really fulfill that yet, but I am definitely working on it. I do have a building permit waiting to get picked up that's all ready to go for one of the properties there. And honestly, one of them, it, it is near, nearer to residential that won't, may not be allowed with the new ordinance. So, odor has always been a concern of mine there, and that is part of what's held us back. But not that I need to tell you my whole business right now, but in talking to my landlord at one of the properties, he is willing to actually build a building inside of the building because he understands that nobody else wants to do that in somebody else's building. So, I hope to be able to move forward with that one soon. There's all my problems. Thank you, therapist. I appreciate it.
Yes, always helpful.
I need to talk to somebody super bad.
And I, I saw, you know, it's longer period of time for people who have existing permits, licenses, but I think we also want to look at, you know, so we don't put someone in a situation where six months from now they're going to lose something because of something new. So, that's something we will look at. So, thank you for raising that.
I appreciate that.
A thousand milligrams of CBD oil every day, under your tongue.
Trust me, I medicate reg, much more regularly than I ever did before. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Karina. I'm here from High Road Consulting Group out in DHS, and I've been attending the planning commissions for the past two months. I had a couple of questions. No, it's been very interesting. So, it's been very interesting. So, I had a couple of questions regarding some of the, the things that were added. For the temporary cannabis event permits, they're requiring an odor control plan, and that it must demonstrate that there's no odor outside of the event perimeter. Does this mean that these events have to be indoor, or do the, what are they called, the conception areas, are they supposed to be centrally located within that premises? Because what if there's wind during that day, odor from people who are smoking cannabis is going to transfer outside of those perimeters? So, that was something that I, we would like a little bit of clarification on. Under the tax incentives, it's, it's mentioning adult use retailers in the cannabis overlay zone. Is this referring to the I-10 corridor? Because if I remember correctly, in the planning commission, they were mentioning that only cultivators type six and type seven would be allowed in the cannabis overlay zone. So, I just wanted a little bit of clarification on that as well.
No, all cannabis businesses would be allowed in the overlay zone.
Oh, okay.
And the, the green zone, the concept with the green zone is to offer incentives for people to go to the green zones because we know it solves a lot of our other problems.
Awesome. Okay.
And as far as just the events, I think the intention is that we don't want smoking events that are going to impact residents or other businesses because of the odor. If you want to do an outdoor event in a place where that's possible, edibles would be a good way to go.
Okay. For, there's a section that was deleted on 5.55140, stating that permits are not transferable to third parties. Does this mean that permits will now be available to be transferred to a third party? And could you please clarify a little bit about manufacturers? It says on there that they're no longer requiring land use permits. Is this referring to CUPs? That they're no longer going to be requiring that in certain zones? 5.55140, subsection E5.
I don't, E5? I don't have any.
It was redacted, or I'm, I'm sorry, redlined.
Yeah, that, that means it's, it was, it was removed from that section.
Yes. So, now they will be allowed to be transferred to third parties.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding the question. Go ahead.
So, my question is, since it was deleted or redlined, does that mean that third parties will now be able to receive or receive a permit? Or, and I'm, I'm sorry.
Transfer.
Transfer, yes.
So, I guess we have transfer language in.
Right, but I, I believe there's other transfer language in the, elsewhere in the, in this chapter. So, just because it's removed from, from this specific one.
So, can you, can you find that in after?
I will, yeah, yeah.
After we're done?
Stay connected with them.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding order violations, could you please clarify the difference between subsection A and B? Right now, it says, "If a permittee is complying with their approved odor control plan, they will receive a written warning and seven days, seven days to fix the issue." While subsection B says that if they're not following the odor control plan that was approved, an administrative citation will be issued, and the permittee will have 30 days to fix. How will the city determine if a permittee is actually following their approved odor control plan or not?
Sure, because they'll have an approved plan, and either they're following it or not. They've either complied with it and put in whatever was required, whether it comes to, you know, fans and doors and everything else, or they're not. So, if someone's following what the odor, outside odor control expert told them to do, and they're still emitting odor, then they have 30 days, you know, we want them to work with the odor control plan. We're not going to fine them to get in compliance so there's no odor. If they're not following their conditions of approval, then it's a different story.
Okay, so, okay, that was answered. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Just because we're going over, I know that may be hard for some people. I personally have to leave in five minutes. Yes, and staff has a staff meeting right now, so.
Last short comments, questions?
But then we really do have to wrap it up. But we're available at other times, but I will have to leave, even if you can stay a little bit longer. I can't.
And so will I. I have all, all afternoon.
We'll go a few minutes longer. Hi, Paul.
I'll be as quick as I can. There was a talk, a lot of talk about the odor control. So, the odor control is a lot of what brought this up, and there've even been passionate comments about how odor can be controlled. Well, if odor can be controlled successfully, that's a great thing. I hope we really can. But the reason that this is here is because it wasn't controlled. So, if we have zero tolerance and the businesses are successful as they state that they can be, well, then they don't have anything to be concerned about because they insist that absolutely they can control it, which means they wouldn't be in violation and no one would be calling them about it. So, I want to talk about the nasal rangers and objective process. I'm sure you guys have probably seen my letter about the nasal ranger equipment, but actually, it's not any good. We should really stop using it. It's not objective. So, the goal with something like that is for it to be more objective so that it's fair to the industry and it's fair to the community. The nasal ranger equipment, many of us thought that it had like meters and sensors and all kinds of stuff on it, and it was able to be objective and tell us, "This is the level of odor, or this is the level of the chemical that's being detected in the air." Turns out, it doesn't have anything like that at all. It basically is a tube with a pinhole at one end and a nose piece at the other end. And last time I checked, most people don't breathe through a pinhole.
Veronica, do you want to, because you've got some comments on this.
Hang on one sec, because I've actually spoken with Veronica about this. So, really, the hope is, really, on Veronica going to the conference, the MJ Biz in, in Vegas that's coming up next month, is it Veronica? Oh, no, December, because then hopefully she'll be able to see if there's some new technology. So, this is where technology hasn't yet caught up. This is the slow part of all of it, and someday, hopefully, we'll get there where there's some equipment that is objective. Because it's also not fair to the industry. If they're constantly getting calls, maybe they're getting reports sent in to them by people who just are opposed to the industry completely, and they're just trying to harass them and make life miserable. That's not fair to the industry as well. But it's also not fair to the community, the residents, if they're having to suffer with that. So, yeah, the nasal ranger stuff, really, we should suspend it. I know you're eager to go.
So, Paul, and I just, I want to, while you're up here, I, you know, one of the, one of the toughest issues for Jeff and I, and it's going to be for the council as well, is simply perceptions. So, Veronica recently gave us a breakdown on complaints, and maybe, and they're way, way down, and they were much less than we, than we ever thought when we looked at the actual breakdown. And Veronica, can you give a, just a quick overview for the audience on what you gave Jeff and I? Because it was somewhat surprising for us.
I will say, a lot of the residents have given up. They're just so tired. It's because it's such a burden.
Let Veronica.
In October, on October 4th, from January 1st to October 14th, there were 41 odor complaints that were received. Thirty-nine of the complaints were in the Desert Highland Moratorium area. Thirty-eight of the complaints were responded to. Only five had a faint, detectable odor. None of them required the use of any type of equipment because the odor was so faint, and it usually dissipated within seconds upon arrival. Only one of the investigations detected a strong odor. However, the violation was not attributed to a business. Rather, it was an individual who was smoking cannabis in their backyard.
Yeah, that'll cause it too. And that, yeah, see, that wouldn't be fair to the industry.
Okay, so, duly noted on, on your concern, but we also have to be careful of perceptions as well. And we went through a similar thing with vacation rentals as well, and it took a long time to, to deal with the reality versus the perceptions, and we know that's going to be a big part of it, too. But we see that our, our complaints are down dramatically and pretty minimum for the most part. Obviously, we want to get them to zero, but more importantly, we want to make sure they're legitimate.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why objective process is so important, because that's the only one that's going to be credible. For example, Saint Croix is a manufacturer of this equipment, and one of their requirements is that you, if you have an, an average or above-average sense of smell, you're disqualified from using the equipment. The equipment is actually designed to defeat detection. That's a problem. That's not right. But eventually, and hopefully, you'll discover something incredible.
We've actually been working with our odor control consultant, and just yesterday, they've done proactive inspections of our existing cannabis facilities, and were able to identify some recommendations to help improve odor. So, they're constantly looking and working. And just yesterday, in fact, Lieutenant Vegas is here, he can talk more to it. They recommended use of additional equipment that can actually measure threshold of odor, which if it's, which a business owner can put on, and I'll have him explain it because he was the one who was there with him. But there's technology that's evolving every day that we're on top of. It's not like we're just saying the nasal ranger is everything, because we know it's not. But it's the best available at the time that we invested in it.
Yeah. We're also finding that the best nasal rangers are enforcement people who can smell. I mean, and I don't mean that in a glib way. If there's odor out there, they're going to notice it, and, and they're going to notice if it's strong or if it's weak. What those exact readings are, are less important to us than eliminating the odor from that facility. That's our number one goal.
So, the next thing is on the green zone. So, there's a lot of rumors going around, and unfortunately, Marcus already left. He could probably address it. But some have been saying that the proposed green zone couldn't happen because of utilities. There was some comments about that. We did a little research, and I actually spoke with some of the, the businesses that already exist. So, it turns out Mission Valley Water District is already supplying water even to like the pilot stations, the, and the FedEx building and everything else up there. And as far as septic, that was a question. They said the county isn't allowing any more septic up there, which is not exactly correct according to engineering.
We found that as well.
Right. You can put in septic as long as you have batch with it, a batch system to go along with it. And as far as the other electric and phone and internet, that's all done by Pol Utility. So, it really is feasible, and I think it's really important that we support that green zone, not just for cannabis, but also for other businesses that might want to go up there because that's going to expand our economic base.
We haven't given that up at all. In fact, we have people, yeah, Lori, if you want to speak to it, we have businesses that have literally solved all those issues. So, we're, we're working on that as well.
Support that. And also, I, I thought Joy's property that sat out there by itself was part of the green zone, and if it isn't, I'm sure, I certainly would support that it be included in there, too. We want that opportunity for others. So, that's good. We'll leave it at that. We've all been here too long, so, thanks.
No, that's fine. Unless, Lori, did you want to come up for a minute? Because Lori has actually, she's been there and back.
We're in the FedEx building. We're also in another facility on McLean, in north of the freeway. And the problems are all solvable. We're constantly looking for new environmentally sound ways to solve the problems. FedEx specifically, though we have water, there is no sanitation appropriate. So, we do a full reclamation process there, which is very effective, and then we reduce it down to actually an environmentally sound sludge that goes and is picked up by a, a waste disposal system. And actually, it is, it's non-toxic. It's actually very environmentally sound and can be reused. So, there are issues, there are ways to solve all the problems there. I do want to point out in all the conversations, very quick, first of all, thank you for considering a tax incentive for locations. One of the things that I know based on the facilities that we've built, and as you know, we're both just north of San Rafael and also north of the freeway, is that our buildings have quote-unquote "gentrified" the areas. We've cleaned up where there are no longer drug use in the areas. Our cameras have provided assistance to the police in solving disputes or crimes that have gone on. We have improved landscaping. We've taken derelict buildings and put in millions of dollars to renovate them. And I think that there's always this talk about odor and all of the things that are the problem, but we're solving also other problems that the community has. And I think there needs to be a balance between that. I think it's very, very important to recognize that when somebody makes a commitment to a 20,000 or 30,000-square-foot building that has been abandoned and is now retrofitting it, one, I believe that you have to consider all of the issues around a retrofitted building that's 30 years old, and whether you can achieve 100% elimination. And even if you're effective at reducing it to almost zero, you can have the mistake of that on the day you're harvesting, somebody opens the door to go to their car. And for a period of time, you will have odor, and the wind will pick it up in that region and it'll distribute it. So I think that it's a very complex matrix of items that have to be considered. So anyway, that's my, I appreciate it. And I really appreciate what you're doing in regards to the incentive. I'd love an incentive also based on local employment.
You know what? We're open to anything. You know, when we make your lives work better, our lives work better. And, you know, anything we can do to keep it legal and incentivize it so it makes sense to be legal, we want to do that. You know, we're trying to be a model for the industry, much in the way we ended up being that on the vacation rental industry and other things. So I want to thank you all for coming. I think we learned a lot. Again, do not hesitate ever picking up the phone. Veronica answers her phone, or she will get right back to you on specific issues and questions. If you come up with new ideas or things you want us to know about before the next council meeting, quickly get them to Veronica, and she'll make sure Jeff and I get it. Jeff and I will be sitting down and digesting a lot of what came up today. And come on November 6th, where we'll be, we'll actually be discussing this, and the whole city council will weigh out the planning commission recommendations versus the subcommittee recommendations, which is Jeff and myself and, and our, and Veronica, our secret weapon, Veronica. So thank you all again for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]